Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we'll call this meeting order at exactly 7 o'clock. Would you please join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Secretary, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. President. Mrs. Thising.
Here.
Mr. Kachasik.
Here.
Dr. Koschko.
Here.
Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Newell is absent this evening. Mr. Neemek.
Here.
Mr. Petrusi.
Here.
Mr. Stovall.
Here.
Dr. Trey.
Here.
You have a form, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary, you're welcome. May I have a motion approved in minutes of the September 9th meeting?
Motion.
Motion, McPhill.
Second.
Second, right now.
Do you have a question?
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. This time we'll move right into information. Dr. Harris?
We are going to start right away with Lucash Johnson, who is the student union representative.
Hello, everyone. First, I want to talk about the military tribute game. We raised $500 from donations for wristbands. It will be added to the donation from the coffee shop and sent to the Women's Warrior Foundation. I want to give a special thanks to Mr. Hetrick, Mrs. March, Mr. Edgley, and Dr. Trey. Next, we're going to move on to homecoming. 700 students attended, it's very well organized and decorated with balloons along with lights for the themed cities. The community action program is organizing Drive for Veterans at the Oakland VA Hospital. This will benefit over 150 of the residents, those who visit the clinics, and a homeless population. Also sponsoring Operation Fresh Express for the Westmoreland Food Bank on October 28th, and fresh food will be distributed to the patrons of the food bank and Jeanette. Student Union is helping with the Veterans Outreach Program. And now I want to introduce the Westmoreland Community Federal Credit Union. You guys will stand up.
I'm Erica.
I'm Christine.
I'm Kaylee.
Matt.
Susan.
Linda.
All right. Speech. I'm going to start. We are opening up a student branch at the high school, and I'm going to go straight into the applying process. At first, I was very skeptical about applying for the student branch. I had no idea what or who was going to involve. All I knew was what Ms. Dafkovich and Mrs. Corna had told me. I was quite nervous for the fact that it was the first application I had ever filled out for a job. It was nice to be able to say I applied for a job for once. Interview process. After the application process, I received information in the mail from Westmoreland Community Federal Credit Union, along with Ms. Dafkovich. I was told that I was going to have an interview. I dressed up and looked presentable for the interview, and it was quite nerve-wracking because it was the first time that I met anyone from the Westmoreland Community Federal Credit Union. After I was done, I felt as if I did well. Two weeks later, I received notice from Linda Stein that I was hired to be part of the student credit union branch. I was overjoyed. The next process was being hired. After I was hired, I began to receive mail from Westmoreland Community Federal Credit Union, and I was very pleased. Working at the credit union, over the summer, all three of us had worked four weeks and gained experience about how the credit union works. We learned everything you could possibly learn about being a teller, especially how to handle money and open and close accounts. Being hired was something I was nervous about, because I had no prior experience. Now I'm confident as a teller, and more importantly, happy as a employee of the Westmoreland Community Federal Credit Union slash student branch. Now I want to introduce Matt Zankow.
I just want to explain what we're doing. We made a branch of the Westmoreland Community Federal Credit Union that is going to be out of the high school. It will be open in the cafeteria Wednesdays and Fridays during lunchtime for students to make withdrawals and deposits. They can get membership and become, by becoming a member of the Cash Dash Credit Union, they're also a member of the Westmoreland Community Federal Credit Union. They're able to, like I said, open accounts. They can open a savings account, a checking account, they can get a debit card with a checking account. They're also going to be able to apply for loans and apply for a credit card so that they can start building credit, which will help them in the future. The whole purpose of this is to teach students how to manage their finances, because in a few years, they're going to be graduating, and they're going to be having to do all this on their own. So it's just starting to prepare them. I talked to a few students about applying, and a lot of them didn't even know who they banked with right now. So the whole purpose of this is to get students to know what they're doing with their finances. By also being a member, they can utilize shared branching, which means that they can go into any of 5,000 credit unions nationwide, and they can do anything that they can do at our branches. So when a student graduates and goes off to college, they can still do things with their account back here at home. Like I said, the main thing is to get students to learn how to manage their finances. I know the three of us learned a lot, but we really weren't the only ones that are involved from the high school. Mrs. Corna from the business department is the liaison between the credit union and the high school, so she's involved with the branch. Mr. Steele reconstructed the teller station, which is in the cafeteria. It was brought up here in a ton of pieces, and he and his materials technology class reconstructed it. They also added a base and wheels so it can be moved where it needs to be. The logo was designed by one of Mrs. Haberberger's students from her art extensions class. The name was generated by the student union. They picked the Cash Dash name. And also, the video classes made a video that promoted the credit union, and it was displayed on the morning announcements. So it's not just the business department that's involved, it's all the departments in the school, so that students have an opportunity to utilize the skills that they have and be involved with it. And Kayla Tocan.
So as I mentioned, we will be open during Wednesdays and Fridays in the cafeteria during all lunch periods. And at the beginning of October, we began going down to the lunch periods and talking with students and answering any questions they may have on what exactly we're planning on doing, and that's all to get ready for our grand opening week, which is October 21st through the 25th. And beginning on the 21st, we will have a money machine down in the cafeteria and a prize wheel to kind of get the buzz going for all the students, to get them excited about the 25th, which is our grand opening day. And any student that signed up prior to the 24th will have the opportunity to spin the prize wheel and have a chance to go in the money machine, and that's when we will have our first ribbon cutting ceremony. And joining us will be the Westmoreland County Chamber of Commerce and the Norman Chamber of Commerce. And following that is a luncheon here in the library, which we'd like to invite all of you too. And senior night, which is also the 25th, beginning at 5:30, we will be having a tailgate party down at the Warrior Center, and at 7:10 on the football field, we will be having our second ribbon cutting ceremony, and we will come back up here after the football game, and we'll be answering any questions, and we would like to invite all of you guys to that also, to join us in celebrating the opening of the student credit union branch.
Thank you for your time and consideration and everything. Any questions?
Thank you very much for all that you've done.
Do you have any questions?
Yes.
First of all, thank you, it's great what you're doing. Were you making loans to students, too? And you'd be audited by the Westmoreland Community Federal Credit Union? You'd be audited by them also?
Yes.
Yeah, all the loans will be through the Westmoreland Community Federal Credit Union, and all the parents will also be on the loans if the student's under 18.
And the order will be done by these people also?
Yes.
And your rates, I think it's a great idea. I think it's excellent. Kids are used to borrowing money and saving money, and I think that's very good.
These kids did a great job of getting this up and running. It's a coordinated effort throughout the whole building. They've got different departments involved, and we've got three great kids who are going to get ahead of it. We thank the ladies at the bank, Susan, Linda, you guys have been wonderful to work with, and they reached out to us to make this happen, so we really look forward to it. I think it's going to be a great opportunity for our kids.
How many school districts in the county have this?
Just one.
One? And you guys.
You guys did a great job of presenting. It's very well explained. Sounds like you put a lot of time into it, did a great job. And Gail.
Thank you.
I have to contribute a comment relating to your ingenuity. I mean, you're going to be on YouTube, too, so it's a great activity. You're going to get public relations, and it's a great concept. You really do. As the principal said, you're very much involved with the entire school. You made the school's project, classmates' projects, and you've actually made us a part of that whole process, too. So thank you.
Thanks, Dan. You did a great job.
Good job.
Next, we're going to, this is our first month, we get to honor our students. They've been in school for one month now, and we have several schools that have chosen students of the month, and we're going to start with Mr. Schwartz from Harrison Park Elementary School.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. It's my honor to introduce Chase Vecchio as Harrison Park Student of the Month. Chase, come on up. Can you stand right up front and center for us? Perfect. Son of James and Suzanne Vecchio, Chase is an outstanding 5th grade student. Outside of school, Chase likes to play basketball, football, baseball, and enjoys spending time with his family, watching sports, and playing board games. And when I interviewed him, definitely family came out all throughout his interview, and said, "Well done, parents." He really enjoys spending time with you guys. When he grows up, he'd like to play, he'd like to be a professional basketball or football player. In school, he enjoys math, because it challenges him, and he likes to learn new things. His favorite moment at Harrison Park is his recent trip to Deer Valley. He enjoyed spending time with his friends and having fun in the different stations. When I asked his teachers to share how Chase is doing this year in 5th grade, Mrs. Smith, one of his teachers, shared the following. "When I think of Chase, I'm reminded of the quote, 'Character is doing the right thing when nobody's looking.' Chase is always doing the right thing, whether it's in the classroom, during math, on the football field, or helping appear in a tough situation. He is one of the hardest-working students I've had the pleasure to teach. He continually succeeds in all areas because he's always looking for ways to improve himself.'" One example that demonstrates Chase's character happened during a math lesson. Chase has completed a lesson and had the opportunity to share his extra time, sorry, to use his extra time to play a math game on the computer. The students simply love this game, and it's rare we have a chance to play. Chase started the game, and as I worked with another student, I overheard Chase asking a classmate that was visibly frustrated what the problem was. The classmate said that there was a particular problem giving him trouble. Chase stopped his math game, walked to the back of the room, and got a whiteboard. I watched as he pulled a chair up beside a student and showed him step by step how to solve the problem. He then proceeded to set up two practice problems to ensure the other student understood the process. I was blown away. I complimented Chase on his behavior. He simply shrugged and said he'd do the same for me. Since that day, it seems like I'm continually catching Chase doing things that impresses me, but to him, they are just the right things to do. Chase has the ability and drive to do what others will think is impossible. He has a very bright future, and we're proud to have him represent Harrison Park for this month's Student of the Month. Congratulations.
This does sound very often, but Chase, would you like to say something?
Um, no.
We've never done this before.
No.
Look, Kayla, we're very proud of your accomplishments.
Thank you.
And particularly the fact that you took, at your age, you take in so much care and interest in people around you, your classmates, and that's a really special quality at your age, and I hope that stays with you for a lifetime. So Chase, congratulations. That'll be that for the board.
Thank you.
Wish you the very best.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, for our middle school student of the month, we have our newest middle school principal, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. It's a pleasure to recognize Eden Elmer from Trafford Middle School. Eden, while she makes her way up, Eden is accompanied by her parents and her brother, Cam, who, by the way, is a very, very good student at Trafford Middle School as well. So I want to recognize that as well. He said he's better dressed than she is. I doubt that. Eden is a wonderful student. She has nearly a 4.0. This quarter so far, she has nearly all A pluses, in fact, almost 100 percent. She is also a student here at the high school. She's taking her English class here with ninth grade class here at the high school, and doing quite well, by the way. So she is a fabulous student, always focused, always working, looking to go the extra mile in school. What impressed me about Eden, by the way, if you haven't noticed, is her bubbly smile, which never leaves her. But I watched her in the cafeteria one day greet a new student who was very anxious about coming to the middle school and about eating in the cafeteria with strange students. Without anybody saying anything to her, she got up, walked across the cafeteria, greeted the student, and invited her to eat with her. That's the kind of person that she is. She's a member of the cross-country team the past two years, a member of the track team, ran the 800 and 1600 meter, and she runs in competitions across Pittsburgh. She's an avid reader, she plays the piano, she plays for our Spectrum competition, and plays in our chorus concert numerous times. She's in winter guard and plans to be in the color guard when, next year, she joins the high school. Eden babysits, she helps out at the hospital, I'm sorry, at the church. I'm sure she would at the hospital, too. She has done Habitat for Humanity and has been a member of the student council. She is, she represents what we wish for in every student. Eden, congratulations, well deserved.
This is my pleasure, on behalf of the board. Eden, is there anything you don't do? You have a great smile. You have a list of characteristics that are just wonderful, and when I grow up, I want to be just like you. Wish you the very best.
Thank you.
Finally, we have our high school winner, with Mr. Scott English.
Kayla, come on up. I have Kayla DiPaolo, she's in grade 12. Kayla is here, I know, with her mom and dad over there, so thanks for coming. She's also, Kayla has a sister who graduated in 2010, who's a Pitt of Greensburg. She has a sister here now, who's a junior, Natalie. But Kayla came to mine because of, I've got a lot of comments over the last couple of months about her and the difference that she makes in this school, and I just want to share some of those things with you. But first of all, I'm going to tell you, you know, her involvement in the school, and her involvement is just this, she's involved in the Spanish club, astronomy club, our SAD program, our CAP program. She's going to be inducted to our National Art Society next month. We just had those selections and application process here the last couple of weeks, so that will happen for her next month. She's very involved in soccer. She's played the past four years for the high school, and I'm sure she's played since, I think, Pee Wees back in the days, back when she was four or five years old, but she's played all her life, and that's a sport that's near and dear to her. She's been the captain of our team for the past two years as a junior and as a senior, so when you're captain as a junior, that certainly says something. She does it very well, from what I understand. She was named All-Section Goalkeeper last year, and she's been nominated for All-Section this year as well. She's also played the last couple of years for Allegheny Forest in the Cup program that they have, so she's an excellent soccer player. And I'll share with you some of the things that her teachers have said about her, which really impressed me. Kayla's a joy to have in class. She's a very conscientious student who is always striving to be the best. She works very hard to meet every deadline and puts forth the extra effort to ensure that she has mastered the material. She has determination to complete anything she starts, she does not always shy away from voicing her opinion, which is always presented in a respectful manner. Kayla is polite, respectful, exhibits strong leadership skills, and she is outstanding by any measure. She's quiet, focused on her work, her behavior is always appropriate. Her Spanish teacher really enjoyed her, and she said this, "I have been extremely lucky to watch her grow in her language acquisition and to see her jump from a regular Spanish 3 class to an honors college level 4 and succeed in doing so. She is a very hard worker and makes achieving high scores look easy. I know that she is very involved in sports, but she never lets that get in the way of her studies. I'm extremely proud of her." Her coach is very proud of her as well, and I want to say this about her. Coach says, "I've had the privilege of watching her transform from a quiet sophomore into the speaking captain. As a captain, she leads by example. She never takes a minute off when training, ensuring that all our exercises are competitive. She often amazes the coaching staff as well as her peers with her effort in acrobatics. If you've ever seen her in goal, she makes some quite, some serious moves. She jumps and she flies around there. I don't know how she saves them, but she, the Norman game impressed me the most. She had an outstanding game, had three great saves. So if you don't have a chance to see her, you should go see her in the playoffs. Because if you make the playoffs, we don't know where we're playing, but it's coming up soon." In addition to her efforts, she brings the, brings the exercises. Kayla always helps with moving goals, setting up exercises, cleaning up cones and balls, something that is very, very difficult to motivate seniors to do, as you can imagine. To sum it up, she's an excellent example of a student athlete. You know, Kayla is a leader on that team, and my daughter has had the privilege of playing with her this year. My daughter's only freshman. Freshmen kind of have their own little spot in pecking order, you know, there's the seniors and so on, and, you know, sometimes the freshmen aren't given the respect and the privileges that, you know, that they come along with with being on the team, but Kayla has made an effort to embrace the freshmen and take them under her belt and serve as a mentor and a leader to them, and those girls that are young like that really admire and look up to Kayla as a role model. So that says a lot about you and your character, so congratulations to you, Kayla. She's unsure of her college choice at this time, but she plans on majoring in criminology or criminal justice, and she certainly wants to play soccer, so good luck in all you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eden, I'm sorry I didn't give you an opportunity to speak and say something. Do you wish to say something from where you are now?
Uh, I don't know.
Thank you. Thank you very much. First student response, that's tremendous. Okay, Kayla, you've done many things. You're a talented young woman, and you take charge, you take leadership, and I wonder if you'd like to take a little bit of time now, at your advanced age, to offer any advice or direction to those of us collected this evening?
Well, just thank you for recognizing me.
Well, we very much appreciate that, too, and I know you're going to have a very successful life, no matter what you undertake, and we're all very proud of you, and wish you the very best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are going to take a few minutes just for a press photo, and then after the press photo, and we can have the students please move over to the right side of the room. If parents and the students want to leave after that, that is fine. If you want to stay for the rest of the long meeting, that is fine as well. We're just thinking. If we can have the students, who are students of the month, please come over to this area with Dr. Trey.
Yeah, it looks fine right now, so.
In a few seconds, I'm going to introduce Brad. But just two brief announcements. First, Energi will be here on October 21st, the district admin office, to present us with a check for over $9,000 for our foundation, for all the families who have switched to First Energy. So I'd like to thank all those parents. And Mrs. Kerr from Harrison Park Elementary School, Mr. Schwartz. On behalf of the Juvenile Diabetes Research Fund, we made their local newspaper for the last year on their very first effort on their walkathon. Harrison Park raised the most money for type 1 diabetes research of $12,000. So congratulations to Mr. Schwartz and Mrs. Kerr and all the students at Harrison Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Doc.
And now I'm going to introduce Mr. Legar, who is...
Okay, this evening with us are bond professionals. I'd like to introduce Mr. Chris Brewer from Dinsmore &amp; Shoal, our bond counsel, and Mr. Tony Masiti from PNC Capital Markets, who does our underwriting. They're here to just update you on where the bond markets are based on some of the scenarios that we have been discussing over the past several months, and answer any questions that you may have. I just want to say before they start that I call on these guys and email them regularly, and they are always responsive, they get back to me right away, they answer all my silly questions, and there's never a charge in the district. So we're very fortunate to have them working with us, they're great partners of the district. And with that, gentlemen, I turn it over to you.
Good evening, everyone. Glad you had your question. Very appreciative of that. You should all have a handout in front of you that basically is, comes in two parts. The first, the full part is simply what Brett reviewed with you on the latest scenarios, updates to the scenarios for completing the project, given the targeted amount as it sits today. What I did was I added one more scenario for tonight's discussion, which basically would mirror what we did exactly a year ago, where if there's still a slight delay in the project, if there's still some time to refine the project, or if there's a significant change in gears, but there are still some smaller aggregate projects that need done, there's still another way to look at the capital that's been borrowed. The second part of the book is kind of the main focus, if you will, as to why, what did the markets do? Why are we in a different position today than we were 12 months ago? What exactly happened, and how has the market flushed everything through? So just to start, and at any time, if there's a question, please don't hesitate to ask. We'll go through very quickly the scenarios so that everyone has them fresh in their mind, and then I'll take on part two to bring you up on any market, and that's probably where I'm assuming the bulk of the questions will come. If you turn to page A1, that's for Scenario A, and that would be to finance the remainder of the project at its full amount. At this point in time, $32 million has been the estimate, so that's where Scenario A is. And what Scenario A does, and on page A2 in particular, is the chart that would outline where would this debt fall in place to where the district's debt levels are currently. This scenario would keep the new borrowing, the remainder of the borrowing, and therefore all the financing for the full project. It would maintain that at the district's current equivalent millage within the budget. And that would run out approximately 18 years, 17 and a half to 18 years at this point. But as you can see on that chart, you would borrow the full project amount, and it would come in at the same equivalent from a millage standpoint as to what you're paying today and what the district has been paying for many years. And on that chart, I kept some of the prior years on there, even though they have, that debt service has been paid off, just to reflect that the district has been cruising along at that same level for a number of years now. The second scenario, if we flip to pages B1 and B2, and you can see the numerics are on the first page, the graphical representation would follow on page two of each scenario. This scenario, again, addresses the full project amount. Let's finance the remaining need for the $32 million project, but this keeps it to about a 12-year final maturity. And this, as you can see, will cause that full borrowing amount to peak through where the current debt service millage equivalent is. Basically... But again, that would address borrowing the full $32 million remaining project need to get to 32 million, but in a little more condensed window as far as the final maturity. Scenario C is the combination, if you will, of the first two. It's what could we borrow as a district if we kept the final term to 12 years, no longer than 12 years, and we didn't want to peak through where our millage equivalent is right now for annual debt service? And on page C2, you can see what that results in. Again, nice, short, compact debt service structure for the district. You do not peak through your existing level. And you would be able to raise approximately, inclusive of the 2012 issue, about $26 million toward projects at the district, should there be refinement or a scale down or a redirection of the projects originally addressed at the $32 million level. So now with that being said, the last scenario, which is the new one for this package, on pages D1 and D2. What that scenario contemplates is exactly what the district got started with last fall, which was, and I will let Chris Brewer discuss the legal side of this once we wrap this up, but just to introduce the topic again is the fact of bank qualification. If any governmental entity on a tax exempt basis borrows $10 million or less within a calendar year, not your fiscal year, but the actual calendar year, you have, you can put a special designation on your bonds called bad qualification. And what that does is that entices banks, financial institutions to purchase your debt because they can treat the interest and their cost of purchase differently on their tax filings as a corporation. So they get a break for buying your bonds in short. And there's another big incentive to borrowing in these bank qualified chunks for a district, and that is the rates are typically lower than if you were to borrow greater than $10 million because banks are willing to buy up, pay up, if you will, so lower rates to you if they can get that tax benefit on the other side. Second big benefit for you is that typically the bank qualified issuances carry a shorter optional redemption feature, being five years versus 10 years on larger issues. That five-year call feature gives you complete flexibility and control over your bonds if you need to refinance sooner, if you would like to pay bonds, if you happen to have the cash flow to pay the bonds off sooner. That gets you to that call date quicker than if you issued non-bank qualified. So those are the advantages and that's why we show this. So if you look on pages D1 and D2, again, D1 being the numerical representation of the annual cash flows and D2 being the graphical representation, you'll see there that we would follow, again, not that this has to be the structure, but this would be one to consider very seriously if you would go and say, you know what, I think we do need to go ahead and chunk off another piece. We're not quite sure what the end dollar amount is, but we should probably take advantage of the markets before, you know, they're continuing to slip away. Maybe we borrow another 10 million. That puts our proceeds for the project close to 20 million, considering the amount we borrowed last year. That'll put us right, right under the $20 million mark. And we can still manage our debt service. As you can see here, what we've done, again, just to visualize it, we've allowed the debt service to begin to creep down or slope downward. That gives you two benefits. Number one, if this is where the projects would end and we're not going to do more than this, we have a little more flexibility in our annual budget because now our debt service is sloping downward, I'm gaining utilization of that cash. If we are taking the next step and finishing that project to the full amount, potentially higher, depending on where construction costs may come in, there is room to still backfill that debt service and keep you at your current level and fill that hole back in. So again, it can be structured completely up to the current level. It can be sloped downward. That's a structuring issue once we get to that point. But I wanted to bring that to your attention, that it is something to consider. The same approach we had last fall, which was to chunk off that first 10 million, it could be very advantageous to do that again before year end, to chunk off that next $10 million piece, should the district decide that's, we want to take that next step. So with that being said, any questions on the scenarios?
Would you be able to give us a reasonable explanation of what happened in bond markets since the last event, Jim, and you decided to do a very criminal investigation?
Absolutely. And that actually, a great way to address that is if you flip to the kind of the back part I just labeled as pages one, two, and three, as the four part were pages that you had seen. Page one shows exactly what happened from a rate standpoint. And if you look at the larger graph to the right-hand side, you'll see a star. And the star is where the district borrowed last fall. And you can see what happened to rates since then. If you look at the enlarged component of the last 52 weeks, where the district borrowed its last $10 million chunk, you can see that highlighted with a yellow circle. Then you can see basically a trend where rates remained relatively constant until really a magic date in time. And this will address directly, I think, that question. Federal Reserve Chairman Ben Bernanke spoke on June 19th. And in essence, his dissertation to the public had zero change from what he spoke about in March, except he was a little more ambiguous as to when the Federal Reserve might start winding back QE3 or their quantitative easing program with their monetary policy. Basically, they're buying of debt in the US, into the US Treasury of $85 billion a month. What the market interpreted his ambiguity to mean was that it's ending. It's going away. Rates are going up, they're going up tomorrow. So what you saw was an immediate sell-off. Investors in fixed income, whether it be municipal bonds, whether it be US Treasury securities, corporate bonds, they took their money out, which I'll show you on page two in a moment. They took their money out and they decided to be on the sidelines. If rates are going up, why would I buy today at 3% when I can buy tomorrow at 5%? And that was the mentality. And around our, in Chris's world, my world, across the border, we call it the lost summer because nobody knows why Ben Bernanke said or didn't say what was in the Fed minutes. And everybody, to bond fund managers, to individual investors, everybody kept using the term overreaction. No one was really sure why this happened and why the markets reacted the way they did. But at the end of the day, rates did go up and it was basically a supply and demand outcome. And if you flip to page two, while this is a busy chart, I think it speaks volumes. All the blue bars that are above the line show positive inflows of investor cash into the municipal markets. Investors wanting bonds, buying bonds. So the higher the demand, the lower the interest rates. The more that your paper, your product is out there and in demand, people are going to pay up for that, meaning again, lower rates to the issuers. All the red bars are where holders of fixed income just wanted out. They wanted to sell off their holdings because they wanted their cash for equities, or they wanted their cash for commodities, or they wanted their cash just to keep on the sidelines and wait for higher rates, higher returns. And if you think about it, we have been in a period of very low interest rates for a very long time at this point. And investors, you kind of get the sense that investors have been, okay, I've had it up to here with getting 0.25% on my money markets. I've had it up to here with getting 1% on my three- to five-year CDs. I want return and this is our chance to get it. So they pulled back, they used the Fed's lack of direction, if you will, as a reason to say, hey, the Fed is pulling back on this. Rates are, they're due to go up, they are finally going up. And that's what we witnessed. To give that a little more color, from June 19th, when Chairman Bernanke spoke, until the end of September, $45 billion came out of municipal bond funds alone. So that's a huge number. And we still have just entered the time period where those started ticking back down. And the reason why those outflows started ticking back down and we kind of got a little bit of stability in the market, which actually, if you flip back to page one, you can see at the very tail end of the upper graph where the green line started to trend back downward and kind of stabilized. That came immediately following the release of the September Fed minutes, where everyone back in June anticipated the Fed to roll back quantitative easing and actually start pulling maybe upwards of $20 billion out of those monthly purchases to keep rates low. They came out and said, we're not ending this, we're not shortening up our purchases anytime soon. And all of a sudden, the market said, okay, then what did we just do for the last three months? And people came back in the market, not raging, but people came back in the market. The US Treasury, which 10-year, which was touching on 3%, fell all the way back down to just above a 250. And we saw municipal rates start to creep back down, not one for one, but they started to creep back down as well, where we got back into a more normalized trading range for municipals and we saw buyers actually come back in the market. In particular, we saw banks come back into the market to purchase securities for their inventories and for their income purposes because they felt it was kind of a bargain. We see rates went up, we can't lend money at this high of a credit level. We could just take those deposits and purchase municipal bonds, tax exempt municipal bonds on the BQ notation, and we're making more money on that interest than if we were to lend the money, equivalent amounts, to maybe a lesser credit. So that's where we sit today with rates.
What kind of rate ceiling sees the bond market?
From there, it's the Federal Reserve, from an interest rate management.
Yeah, I think this would be an excellent example of regulation that might work from Washington to give out money to all of them, like just to cap these certain percentages change because of speculation, just like I think they're talking about the same thing in the stock market. You know, he should have come out the next day or whatever. And it's just amazing that something like that can happen and cause, you know, chaos that it did. And obviously, it's going to, it's going to cost this district moving forward because of this interpretation of what the Fed chairman had to say on the day.
Exactly. And they tried to find a lot of stops for, from the equity side, trading limits, short sells, you name it. But it just seemed when it came to market manipulation, because it was all based on federal speak, it was basically, they took it almost word for word. And again, his speech really didn't say much different than what it said in March. So no one in the market anticipated any true change because all the Fed kept reiterating was, we're really not going to start unwinding these programs to keep rates down until probably the end of 2014. So here we sat, June of 2013, and everybody's eyes just became big as pie plates when Bernanke spoke. The minutes were released at 2:00 PM that afternoon and by 4:00 PM, Treasury rates were just headed like this and every other fixed income asset was just tagging on for the ride.
One final question, George. What would be the recommendation for us, George? Would we borrow $23 million at one time or split that into, or we're running the risk if we continue borrowing, we tend to throw them in, and have them in the program next time this year? Or running the risk, just make a good service out?
We could, I think actually, this is a great segue to have Chris Brewer come in and speak on the legal side of that and the structuring of the borrowings, whether it's full or you continue the incremental borrowings in the $10 million approximate chunks. I will add real quick that the risk, obviously, with any of this is interest rate risk to the district. If you take $10 million more instead of borrowing all of it, you take the interest rate risk off the, excuse me, of the 10 million, you take interest rate risk on the remaining completion bonds for the project. That could be that rates go up significantly, that could be that rates remain flat, it could also mean that rates start creeping back downward again because what they're waiting for is some positive economic sign and not just, okay, the number came out, it was 5,000 more jobs were added. They need a significant number. They want that number to be 20,000 jobs were added. No new initial jobless claims, you know, to decline in returning claims. They want to keep seeing that in conjunction with your manufacturing indices, that they're going up and that inflation remains tame. Their benchmarks seem to be that jobless claims number and new jobs added, coupled with where is inflation and where is the unemployment rate overall? And as long as that number is hovering at 7% or above, they really aren't going to move. As long as inflation is tame at 2% or lower, they really don't want to move. And those are kind of the things to keep an eye on as to what could really move these markets and move them quickly. Conversely, if you do the remaining 22 million, 22 and a half, whatever it works out to be, now you're taking interest rate risk completely off the table. But the one thing I will add before I turn it over to Chris is that just keep considering that where you locked in your first 10 million was at one of the all-time lows in the market. So if you would borrow today where rates are still on a relative basis low, and then even if rates would go up, you added the last completion piece, you've dollar-cost averaged your debt. So you didn't borrow at a peak and get it all locked in at, you know, at a disadvantage to the district at a difficult time in the market. What you did was you took bites of that apple and when you blend all of those together to look at what your full project cost you, the 10 million you borrowed last year at the ultimate low rates, and then if you would take off a small piece again this year at relatively low rates, that blending is going to help offset anything if rates would go up significantly on that finished piece. So that's one thing to keep in mind is that kind of dollar-cost averaging and layering that debt on has definitely worked to your advantage to this point.
There's a government shutdown. What would those have affected bond markets?
That government shutdown right now has really impacted the market from a standpoint that everybody has taken pause. There's been really no activity in the bond market. We're still holding at about a two, between a 2.60 and, 2.6% to 2.7% on the 10-year US Treasury. Intra-day, the trading's somewhat volatile, but when you look over week to week since all of this has come out and the stalemate, it's really traded in a relatively flat range. Municipals have remained extremely flat. We haven't seen a positive uptick in money coming into bond funds. So we're, I think everybody's just kind of taking a wait-and-see approach now because it's that when Bernanke spoke in June, fool me once, shame on you. Now if we act too soon and overreact with what's going on at the Fed level right now and you fool us again, shame on me. So I think that's the approach that the investors are taking right now and that's why you really see flat markets. And until they get a positive news, and on that last page are just some bullet points, if you need a cure for insomnia later today, you read through those. It gives you kind of what I just spoke about in the market. But on that last bullet point, that might give you a little more clarity. One big item right now is if the nomination of Janet Yellen to take Ben Bernanke's place as chairperson of the Federal Reserve, the market would have reacted if her competitor would have stayed in the race. He was seen as someone very hawkish that wanted out of all this quantitative easing. So we would have seen rates skyrocket. Janet Yellen being the nominee is being viewed as someone who's in favor of the quantitative easing, but maybe not to the extreme level. So that, that combined with what we all envisioned, the government coming to grips with what it needs to do here and make sure the bills get paid and everything gets put back on track, that probably will give the markets a little more confidence. And we probably will see things remain somewhat flatlined into next year, into the early part of next year. The market would have reacted, her competitor would have stayed in the race. He was seen as someone very hawkish that wanted out of all this quantitative easing. So we would have seen rates skyrocket. Janet Yellen being the nominee is being viewed as someone who's in favor of the quantitative easing, but maybe not to the extreme level. So that though, that combined with what we all envision, the government coming to grips with what it needs to do here and make sure the bills get paid and everything gets put back on track, that probably will give the the markets a little more confidence. And we probably will see things remain somewhat flatlined into next year, into the early part of next year. But again, any positive news on the on the economy that is significant, like I said, greater than, say, 5,000 new jobs added, or this estimate was exceeded by 10% of the number that the market wanted, that will cause the market to react much more violently or quickly, if you will, than these small numbers that we've seen over the past two months.
Tony mentioned the the lost summer, and I don't, that's a phrase we can use. I think that people in the business like you and I feel that in terms of market activity and what traders and buyers were doing, this summer was almost as bad as 2008. Well, in 2008, we had the recession, we sort of knew where everything was going. But in terms of the market just kind of catching this big, you know, hiccup and not knowing what to do and people kind of sitting still or maybe cashing in or whatever, it's been it's been kind of crazy. That might be an argument in your mind to get forward, lock in, because lock in has a certain, you know, appeal, you know, I know, because at least you know what you have. Why I think Tony's point was, you know what you have, you just still will never know if it would have been better or worse if you waited. Which is why some of our advice is going to be still kind of take it steadily. While you certainly want to reduce your interest expense on the debt to the best level you can, don't forget, one of the other reasons we were doing some of this piecemeal approach and the interest cost averaging on the debt side is that on the investment side, you ain't making anything on this money. And so you're carrying it, you know, without recovering much interest earnings during the whole time you've had the cash. So if you do fund up, say, a larger financing to try to get all the way through and lock in the cost, you will, at least in this market, continue not to be able to earn back the interest expense until the money gets expended. It's not as big a cost dollar wise because it's over a two or three year period versus the, say, 12 years of your bond issue, but it is one more ball in the air, one more thing to kind of balance and juggle as you look at this. So really, that's financial on the lawyer, not about the finance. Tony does a nice job and has a nice job explaining the markets on that. So let me just jump over to the lawyer. The basic rule we have, really pretty simple, the IRS, the main thing you have to think about is it's going to want a certification when you do borrow, whatever additional funds you borrow, certification like you had made back in 2012, that you reasonably expect to expend 85% of the money over a three-year horizon. That three years earned you the legal ability to invest the money at whatever rates you can find in that so-called temporary period. When you reach the end of three years, the world doesn't end, you don't have a bad bond issue just because the money didn't get all spent like you thought it might. But you would be held back in the return and rate of interest on the money. All of which I tell everybody these days, and it's been a half dozen years or more since it mattered, because again, as I said, you can't make any money on this money. So a lot of the rules that you have to worry about in terms of rebate or yield restriction and things like that aren't really a worry. But as I said, you aren't making much money on this, so you're going to carry it if you don't get it if you don't get it applied. And secondly, three years is important for us for this reason, that, you know, the people at the IRS, they're good folks, but they're like anybody else, hindsight's sort of 2020. If you do borrow up more money, and if you especially borrow up a whole chunk of money and the project continues not to get, you know, forward with some decent, you know, progress. Then I do worry for my clients of a situation, if you get the IRS audit, they're doing a lot of random audits, pull up the files and they call the people and send out the letters and start looking at things. You get to the, you know, you get to a period where the look back says, geez, what have you been doing? If you have reasonable expectations that you expect to be able to proceed in the three years as your horizon to getting the money spent, that sets, you know, the issue as being fine and legal and tax exempt. But it's always something that, looking back, gets a little harder to talk about and justify than it does right today. So that's a long way of saying, you know, my 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 advice to you is to certainly know that if you want to get forward, whether it's just another 10 million, or certainly if it is sort of, you know, the more complete project financing, you've got to really be sure you feel you can get to an expenditure. If you don't get it all spent at the end of three years, it doesn't mean disaster happens, but we just don't want to create what begins to look by hindsight as a record that you said you're going to do this and you didn't get there, and it causes Mr. IRS agent or Mrs. IRS agent who thinks they get the next promotion in their department to really take a hard look at you if you came up on audit. I've had at least a couple of clients over the years whose projects didn't take the course that they first thought. And as long as even two and a half years later, as long as we are able to get on track with a real project, with real expenditures, the IRS seems to be just fine. So I don't think they're looking for trouble, but they would always want to see you proceeding. So I'm afraid I'm using too many words because I don't want to make too much of this other than to say that whatever you're going to do, whatever borrowing here, we're going to want to know that you're that you're comfortable that you're getting forward. One other thing, you talk about interest rate risk and, you know, locking in and what rate it's going to be and so forth. I think Tony made another very fine point. There really is a two-tiered market. And in the banks as investors in the 10 million and under market, really not only widen your investor group and therefore lower rates because you have more people chasing after those bonds than than other bonds in the marketplace, but by and large, they will accept the five-year redemption. Whereas if you sell a much larger issue, the bond will probably not be callable for up to 10 years. That's going to be a fun looking bond issue. If you decide, and Tony, you jump in here and correct me, you decide, yeah, we want to borrow it all, but we don't want to take it out too long, and so we've got this 15 and a half year kind of issue, you put a 10-year call restriction on it, then you have two-thirds of that debt, it won't be quite that way, the way they've amortized, but you're going to have roughly two-thirds of that debt just locked in. The rate is the rate, and that's what you're going to pay. Because you're not going to get to the option in time to get to refund it or do something with it for 10 years.
That's a great, I'll jump in real quick, Chris, that's a great point because the district has taken advantage of the refunding ability on its prior debt service issues to, you know, the quote unquote, wring a little more water out of that stone over the years. So even though you may have issued at rates up here in 2000 or in 1999, in five years from that point forward, you get into the early 2000s, you start seeing where rates have gone, you hit the call date on there five years, all of a sudden, we're able to, rates are lower, we can call all those old bonds in, replace it with refunding bonds in the market, and we save X thousands of dollars or X percent. And okay, all of a sudden, that project we did back then, we've lowered the overall cost to the district. And then you issue those with, if it's eligible for a five-year call period, let's say that was done in 2003, here we go in 2008, five more years have passed, rates are lower, we're able to refund that again. So that's something to keep in the back of your mind that with that, especially given the district's term that you're looking at for for the completion bonds, is relatively short, especially compared to a lot of other districts that Chris and I work with or, you know, or that we know of, that you, their debt horizon is 25, 30, 35 years out.
Do you understand what we're doing? We're going to give future warrants, going to amortize the 30-year debt, if we can get it done sooner.
That's right.
Oh, no.
Absolutely.
We think that's great.
Right.
We think that's very good. The rating agencies think that's very good. When you go up for your rating, you know, they look at average life of debt, you know, how soon is it, they look at midpoints, how soon do you have half your debt paid off? All that's good. I only meant that we also are trying to get you as much flexibility and get it at the best price.
So if I'm hearing you guys correctly, it's better than to borrow two more times rather than one more time because it gives us more flexibility in the future, not all the debt is coming in through at one time?
We recognize that if you don't borrow all the rest of it and then rates will skyrocket, you'll hate us. But yeah, not knowing for sure where things are going to go and knowing they could go either direction, there is some value to a slow and steady approach.
What's the timeframe between those that is allowed?
Well, because because some of the advantages we're trying to suggest are valuable to you is this bank qualification, that's a calendar year thing. You could get something done this year and turn pretty quickly around in early 2014 and still get that.
What is your bond rate, still AAA?
Your bond rating's never been AAA. You've bought insurance at times in the past to raise your rating up to that. Your underlying is, don't be, you know, put off by that, nobody's really a pure AAA, not even the United States government. But I don't know what the bond rate is, but I can double check.
You're at the A, I believe the A plus level for your last last bond issue, you're at the top of the A category, the single A category, and that's.
There was a 20-year loan issue on last one, correct?
You were shorter than 20 years.
No, no, you're in the mid 90s.
It is about an 11-year bond, oh.
Historically, you probably did 20-year issues, yes.
Yeah, I think you did 20 years.
The most recent issue was like a 12-year.
It was actually about 11 years on your last issue. But the older issues were done as 20 or 25-year issuances.
Which is, there's nothing wrong with that. But you know, you have managed your debt very well.
Yeah, we had to manage it real well, and we still kept, we borrowed, we borrowed more money by stretching it out, and we gave them a lot more accomplish.
And we're not recommending you stretch out, we are recommending you think about taking it piecemeal because we think there are advantages.
Tony, paraphrase on the piecemeal again, I may have missed a piece of it. So potentially, it seems to be advantageous to go for another 10 million. And then possibly fairly soon, in 2014, another 10 million. Now, we put us close to 30 million, which is fairly close to the closing.
That's right. If you if you basically straddle the calendar year with your closing dates or your settlements on each bond issue, that satisfies the IRS's limitations on what you could issue within that calendar year. So you could have a bond issue that closes mid-December, turn around in January and start the process all over again and have a closing February 3rd. And you take, you've taken your bank qualified total for 2013, and you will have taken it for 2014, but that gets you pretty close to your borrowing need. And given this current spend down schedule, that would probably ride you through even if you did need to do a cleanup piece in 2015, even if it were just for a $2 million chunk or a $2.5 million chunk. Again, even if rates are higher, you've dollar cost averaged, and you could still get that bank qualification, that five-year call feature, five-year redemption feature, you could have that again in 2015. And again, you've mitigated as as best as possible your interest rate risk, but maintained all of your flexibility and sizing your borrowing to your project and not over or under borrowing.
We're not currently trying to create more work, but it's tax planning in this, in our world, and the bank qualification, every calendar year opportunity, just like on your 1040, you can take your deductions and, you know, every year, I mean, it's just, that's the tax law. The other thing is, Tony can sell any bond you tell him to sell. I mean, the nice thing about municipal bonds is you can sort of self-structure, here's where we want our principal, here's what terms we want. But, you know, if you say to him, we want the 20 million, but we want a six-year call, you know, we're only going to have one more year, we want a six-year call, and well, he'll go out and try to sell that. We're not going to find as many buyers to buy something that's sort of odd or not conventional in the market. And so you're going to pay for it and rate. You want that audience of potential investors as large as he can find them so that he can do more horse trading for you. Because the bond sales is not a lot different than, you know, selling cars or stocks and stocks or whatever. You want to get, you know, buyers on the phone, you want buyers kind of almost, you know, competing with each other to put in good orders to get you that lower overall. You know, rates are influenced by what else is going on in the market, things like that, but to his best of ability, Tony tries to time you, you know, when there's a lot of activity, when his sales force has a little more leverage on buyers and can kind of push at them a little bit lower rates than would happen in a different market. Or as I said, if you said, we want these terms, fine. There's always a price for something to be sold, but if you move away from some of those conventions, then you're going to pay a little more.
So if you throw a resolution on for next month, we still should be okay?
If if you tell us that you've got a project or you know you're going to need the money and you want to get forward on a project, and we know it's had some ups and downs in its development, we can do a couple of things. We can certainly be ready for you with official action at your next available meeting. That official action, if you want, could be in the form, I think we did last fall, was the so-called not to exceed outside parameters so that the legislation is separated from the actual bond sale. We don't try to time them all the same night. It means that you're going to hear later what the final rates were, but it also means that he's, Tony's going to get the most flexibility to go in the market when they think that the stars are aligned, rather than the day they just say, well, that's our meeting night. Especially when you tend to have Monday meetings, market just opened up today, people are still kind of feeling it out. That doesn't mean that we have to sit our hands until then. Assume that the document called an official statements for bond prospectus that lays out the plan of financing, the district's finances and all that, that document can get underway, the professionals can go to work on that. Brett loves to write them, he just thinks it's a great, great exercise. But we can get in the queue at the rating agencies, we can start a lot of the background work and activity that will then trim away the timeframe here so that we can be on our toes. And if the market's looking good and you want to pull the trigger, we can do that. There's no real cost in being ready, other than at some point when Tony would on your behalf ask for an official release of your bond rating, then go figure the New Yorkers, the rating agencies want paid, you incur that cost, you don't incur cost to us, but you incur that cost. It's not extraordinary, it doesn't have to be paid that day. But if you backed off, said, we're not ready yet, you could be looking at a charge for that, eight to 10,000 bucks.
Yeah, call it in that range. It wouldn't be eclipse that for your rating, and that's again, because they anticipate that fee to be paid out of the bond proceeds, so it's not coming out of cash on hand. But if the, for some reason it's delayed, you can usually beg forgiveness with the rating agencies, well, we're not quite ready, can you give us another two to three months? And they'll say, okay. Once you get kind of past that 90-day window, then they start to say, wait a minute, you know, number one, services rendered, number two, that rating could get stale because you could have had a material event occur in that 90-day period that could change the way we rate you. And so that's kind of the window you want to avoid. If you know you're going to be issuing, then you, it's pretty safe to go, get that rating, have have the credit review done by the rating agency. And once they look at you, then they know that they've put all their side in place, provided the rating, they get the green light from you to release it publicly, and then they create an invoice knowing that your bond issue is days away. So it's, once you kick the ball off the hill, so to speak, it's not end all be all with the rating agencies, it just becomes, if you never issue that bond, but they've given you the public rating for that, they're going to want to recoup about 60% of their cost is typically the way they work.
They should have done their job.
And they've done their job, right.
What happens when you go back in January or February and do the dance again, do they, is that rating still valid or are we going to do it all over again?
They would want to do it all over again.
But I think that usually is, there's usually an economic.
There's an economic benefit. If you've issued X amount of ti, X times, they don't double your fee.
There's another thing I was going to ask, and Brett, we don't even know it tonight, but the fee schedule, how that works out for basically the cost of capital. If you break it out, you can do it two separate versus, you know, what's the plus minus, so to speak, like, you know, their fees and your own fees.
We definitely can can provide that to Brett and give you that detail. But again, the duplicative costs of breaking it up are really insignificant, I hate to use that term, but they're they're fairly.
Compared to the advantages.
Compared to the advantages of avoiding, say, a 10, 20, 25, 50 basis point movement in the market when it comes to your bottom line of the interest cost of carrying the debt. So that's always taken into consideration, but your duplicative costs on splitting the issuance are typically minimized.
The other thing that could be done, I don't want to speak for you, but it's not uncommon to go ahead and submit for to get a qualification for bond insurance. The bond insurance companies will issue a commitment without a cost or fee, they'll pay for it if you use it. Then Tony's sales force judges the market. If if by paying a bond insurance premium, therefore raising your rating on your bonds from the A plus to, say, double A, brings you even lower interest rates that you should earn back the premium more than if you use it. If it doesn't, you don't. I don't think last time we did.
We did not use bond insurance last time, we did do the analysis and we had quotes from the bond insurers, but with the district's high A rating compared to where the bond insurers, bond insurers, it's one of those, oh, the mighty have fallen. Because of their indiscretions involved in the mortgage business and the way they were running their business at the time, the bond insurers, we went from seven AAA rated bond insurers as late as 2007 to today, there are no AAA rated bond insurers out there doing municipal bonds. We have two players in the market with a third that just joined, and none of those folks have a rating higher than double A. Excuse me, and with them having had negative outlooks for a significant portion of the time up until this past year's spring, early summer timeframe, when they went from negative to stable outlook, the investor community has looked at two things. Number one, they've always viewed that negative outlook as basically one notch lower. So actually putting the insurers in the A category, not the double A category, that's the way they've priced their rates in the market, what they want to see in return. The other thing that that they did was, again, it's it's kind of back to that earlier statement with 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 the Fed speak being ambiguous, is a lot of these investors purchase based on that top line rating because they have portfolio restrictions. And we went out and let's say the bonds were issued by school district XYZ. And we went out and let's say the bonds were issued by school district XYZ and they carried an insurance policy from FGIC insurer, and they were rated AAA at that point in time. That portfolio purchased them based on that AAA rating and the insurer's ability to cover any shortfalls in payments. Well, their portfolio and the investors in that, let's say it was a mutual fund that purchased those, they relied on that AAA rating. Well, then all of a sudden, the rating goes to AA, it goes to single A, it goes to not being rated at all, and that's a whole different level of return demand from when they paid, they agreed to much lower rates at a AAA rating. So now all of a sudden, there's two things happening. The investors are not happy with what they've done, they're not getting the rate of return for the credit risk they're taking. And the portfolio, the, the investor themselves, the mutual fund is unhappy because now they have to unload a bond because their portfolio is by, by their own charter is not allowed to hold something that's rated as low as it had become. They have to find a way to sell that and not lose too much money on that investment. So that's, again, what investors were seeing out there is, you pulled the wool over our eyes earlier, you're not AAA anymore, we're going to be really, really reluctant to go back into that unless we really find value in it. And so, long story short, the analysis that we did for the district last bond issuance was, what are the fee quotes to pay for that insurance? What is the benefit in the market? And are we getting demand from investors on the other side saying, "We will pay up," again, "lower rates to you, we'll pay up to get that insurance name wrapping our bonds." What happened last year was, they liked the pure credit of the district and they said, "That's, we'll give you these rates." And the rates that the insurers, with the insurance wrap on it, were basically on top of those rates they were willing to pay and you would have had to pay the insurance premium on top of that. So the economics worked out that because of your rating, because of the way investors viewed the district, they didn't want the insurance wrapping the bonds. So we would do that exact same analysis on your next bond issue. And again, you may get a different outcome this time where they like the insurance, but again, it depends on what is that premium to the district for that, the cost of that insurance wrap? And what's the demand from investors?
I just want to make sure I understand the four scenarios you have.
Sure.
Okay, so I'm just going to summarize in real simple terms, okay?
Yes.
The first scenario, the A scenario, you still have us at $32 million, which is what we have booked our project for, with no tax increase, just like we had talked about, but we cannot do it in the timeframe that we wanted to do it. We would have to extend it, it looks almost five years more.
Yes, right. You would have to go a little bit longer to keep that debt service, annual debt service level at the current peak.
Okay. The second scenario, again, still keeping at the $32 million. To keep the timeframe that we want to keep, we would have to have a tax increase.
You would break through the current deal, that's correct.
Okay. The C scenario, keeping our current tax mileage, the 12 years that we talked about, we realistically could only do a project of approximately, approximately $26 million.
That's correct. Total project, $26 million.
Yes, yes. And then our third one is not to do the big project, do something smaller, under $20 million. Again, we keep our same tax, tax mileage rate, we're still in that 12 years, but the advantage of the, the last scenario is, we can start adding on because we start to drop below what our current level is.
I would consider the scenario D, the last scenario, as basically a hybrid, if you will.
It's $10 million layered on top of your existing debt to either, A, provide room for another subsequent borrowing to get up to the full project amount?
Right.
Or if there is a decision within the district to just, you know what, this is what we want to do, we want to scale back that project for right now, this is what we really need to get done and it, we may not need more than 20 million. What we've done here is we've kept to all of our parameters that we've decided upon as a district to keep it short and did not go, try not to go through that existing peak level debt service. And that gives you kind of the, the flexibility to do both.
Also, it just allows us to pay it off every year of that, too.
That's right. And it maintains the ability to have the five-year flexibility on the debt to try to refinance it, refund it if the cash flow allows for it, and, and just call it in. And, and that gives you ultimate flexibility.
Just trying to make sure I was clear on others. Thank you.
You all have to go through whatever, you know, evaluation, analysis, discussion that you need to go through, which we can be a part of tonight, any other night, whatever you need. If you do decide to give us some instruction to come to you with a resolution or something like that, then we will need some general definition of where you think you're headed if you mentioned these four options. Even though that resolution's, we're at least discussing it tonight, it'd sort of be still one of these "not to exceed outside parameters" resolutions. Tony, in order to give me something to put into the document for you to pass, we're going to have to know sort of which path you think you're on. We wouldn't want to come to you with some, you know, very, very large number with lots of space and room in it, get it authorized, and then you're still not sure which path you're on, we can't get much further down the road with it. And I would rather not put it in front of a resolution that was just so large and broad in order to encompass all the scenarios that we weren't sure which one of them did get paid. It'd be well, to the extent you can, to have some, some direction.
I'd basically say that if it's on a 10th of a public meeting, certainly the very next public meeting, we'd like to discuss the potential to come up with a decision.
Sure.
We don't want to delay this. Any questions? Got momentum, you'd like to continue?
Do we have time to do, I'm sorry, do we have time to still get the bond done in 2013?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, if we hold off the discussion until next month?
When's next month? Early or late?
Or the 3rd or 4th or whatever?
Let me, let me talk a little bit about timing constraints that we have no control over on this side. One timing constraint we don't have any control over on this side is that rating process we mentioned. And the rating agencies are pretty good and they're pretty quick and they like to rate bond issues, that's the only way they get paid. But you can sometimes, especially when we get into busy periods, and year-end can be busy, lots of people kind of, "Oh geez, we really want to get this done before year-end." So if Tony gets the whole package together and we send it to New York and it's in the queue for three weeks, that's going to hold us up and we just can't control that too much. So, again, telling us, which I think you're telling us tonight, to go ahead and get some homework done, we'll, we'll go ahead and start that. The other timeline we have no control over is the approval of the bond issue at Department of Community and Economic Development in Harrisburg. It's not a subjective approval, the local committee, the Dead Act, by whose terms I draft your resolution to make your filings, is a black-and-white, T-R-O-C-T-E-S dot-D-I-S kind of checklist of, do we do all the things right? But there's an approval process there, there's a time process there. We often tell clients, allow 30 days from the time we might try to get bonds sold and, and documents filed, to when we'll have an approval back. So if, if we want to get closed by December 31, then, you know, the very, very latest we can get your bond sold would be, you know, that first week of December. And we'd have to have some things sort of done ahead of that. We have, we've got some, you know, techniques, I don't want to call them tricks up my sleeve, but we can, there are some things we can do. We can do a pre-filing of documents with the state without the bond yet being sold. They'll, they'll want me to come back and supplement the filing later when the bonds do get sold, and things like that. What we like to do is to, even if you're voting and passing that resolution in the broad parameters, we still prefer to then to hold that and then once bonds are sold, send the state the full, sort of complete package. So if we do it in that fashion, then, you know, you've got to get these bonds sold no later than, than the, you know, the first couple of days of December. Doesn't mean I couldn't, you know, get you filed kind of ahead of that, I think maybe sell bonds even a little later and still get it closed. One thing that tends to happen in December, if you go too long into this, in December, is that, you know, these buyers of bonds, these investors, these traders, they're like anybody else. The holiday's starting to come up, there's the office Christmas party. You know, he's got salesmen calling saying, "Hey, I'm trying to get an order from you. You know, I got the Penn Trumper bonds, you said you might like to buy some, $100,000 block, $100 million block, can I interest you? Please leave a message." You know, you're not catching people at their desks and, and you can't get orders. So there is a little bit of that if we get too far into the month.
Yeah, Chris Brown, the one point I was going to finish with is that, at this point in the year, the calendar itself becomes one of your hurdles that you need to jump, given Thanksgiving and giving the holidays towards the end of the year, and catching folks in, and you might still have those folks that have some, some vacation left. They may want to take Monday and Friday and Monday off and make it a four-day. So you kind of lose that momentum of, of the energy kind of that we're seeing right now in the fall. Everyone's back from their summer vacations. A lot, a lot of, on the investor side of the equation, the insurance houses, the, the mutual fund houses, they all tend to, to take their four-day breaks around your Labor Day, your Columbus Day weekends. They enjoy that time along with their summer vacations, but then they, they see their next window opening up, once we get towards the, the seasonal holidays at the end of the year, then they like to, to just take that last bite of their vacation apple, if you will. So it's kind of key to manage that calendar from the investor side because you want that large audience, you want as many eyes looking at your bonds as possible because you want to build that demand. You want to build people calling back and saying, "Hey, I like these, I'm in." That's what you want to hear from as many people as possible. Because then if investor A says, "Hey, I like your bonds at 3%," and investor B is calling and you say, "Hey, I got investor A over here at 3%," investor B says, "Well, you know what, give them to me at 290." Okay, they're yours at 290. That's what you want to build. You want to build that, that competition amongst as many investors as possible.
It would sound like the next meeting would be a decision, this is what the locals should make a decision about this summer. So if any board member has a early lead order, we should be ready to make a decision one way or the other, ask the master. If any board member has any questions for the table, I mean, now for time to clarify, just to be ready to now have a good discussion, first meeting, the monster for you next month.
I believe we're ready to go, agree on the 12th. We should be providing you some information, we should be making decisions.
And if, if you think of any other questions you'd like to answer, I mean, you can funnel them through me and I can get ahold of these gentlemen. Again, they are very responsive, so if anything else comes up, just let me know and I'll forward on.
What's the dollar risk? You had mentioned that there's some back office stuff that you could do, I'm not sure the exact rate.
We're not going to charge you for the work we're going to do to get this ready.
So I'm just saying, say we get here and first we can remember and we say, "Go ahead and go." Is there work that you can ask me doing now that will help me take it?
There absolutely is. And I was just going to mention that, that you could actually authorize Brett to, to give us the green light to say, "Okay, start prepping our official statement, start the research, the updating of last year's official statement, start the process of prepping all the documents we'll need to submit to the rating agency." It doesn't mean we have to start that clock on the rating agency, but we could begin gathering all the necessary documentation to send that off.
Include all four scenarios presented to us, which one will need to prepare, which one of the scenarios we choose?
We would have that, yes, as an interchangeable piece, ready to go.
You know, I sometimes say that official statement's not unlike a mortgage application. Well, it's a lot more involved than that, it's a lot thicker, more reading, but it's just the same kind of, you know, you ever fell out of a mortgage, I, again, geez, you just hand it to your spouse, say, "Here, you do this." But we can start that process and have it ready, just go and send it in. Because the day we send it in, we're going to have to send the, you know, we're going to have to be ready to pay the fee.
Two time constraints for the, the Department of Community and Economic Development, actual cookbook application process and the bond rating. Would those be, once we figure a target, would those be running in parallel? You said approximately a 30-day for the, I believe it was for the Community and Economic Development, even though you said it took less time? Then the bond rating guys could take, you didn't give them, you give a type, would those be running in parallel?
They won't overlap, actually, come one behind the other. The rating process needs to get underway as soon as we can. And in the DCV approval, I can't start it, so we've got some kind of action.
So what you need to hear from us maybe tonight is the authorization for the rating process to commence.
Tell us, send, are they looking for authorization to?
Yes, we need a motion. We need a motion. We're going to at least prepare the documents for the next meeting.
Right.
That's not, you know, putting us in any obligation, just so we'll be ready. So I'll make a motion for you guys to, to get this scenario ready based on this presentation you did so we can make a decision next month.
Second that, Mark.
Motion by Phil, second by Dallas.
Question is called for. This will be roll call vote. All favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
No, just one thing I want to add. We did tell the public no tax increases. Just remember that.
This doesn't include the tax increases.
Yeah, this, this motion. I know, I know that, but I'm telling you, when, when we think about the four options, we did tell the public no tax increases, that's what we said.
Yeah. And keeping that in mind, I think it leaves us down to three options.
Well, that's correct.
Well, just leads you back to scaling the project up.
Oh, that's a discussion we can have next month. For now, we can prepare the documents. Just things have changed since we made that decision, and I'm sure other board members have other thoughts on that.
Mr. Secretary, any other motion to the occasion?
No, I think I have it. Thank you. And without being presumptuous, if, if on the 4th you are able to come away after that meeting and say, "We vote and we've decided on option A, 2, 3, 5, 7." Then from that, then, we would still then probably need what might end up being a special meeting to pass the resolution. I mean, I don't think I can come to that meeting.
We have two meetings next month, so.
Oh, you do, okay. That's where it's at.
First and second Monday in November, there's, there's opportunities to do activities and so.
Well, because I'm always.
Actually, we can actually make a, pass the resolution first meeting, proceed with the decision as well, we're ready to make the discussion.
But the November.
I'm just saying, in case, we could make that.
Well, but he's not going to have the resolution ready until you.
Okay, okay, okay.
Decide the parameters of what the project's going to look like.
We have to have the office selected.
The 4th, the second meeting is November.
11.
Another one.
So we would report back to you on the 4th what the decision was, then by the 11th, you could have the resolution ready for the board to pass that.
If any decisions over the 4th is to proceed on any option, then I can promise you the very next day, when I hear a call from you, Brett, we'll have an advertisement in the paper for the 11th. Because on the Dead Act, we have to do a special advertisement. We're all ready for that, we'll get that together. It has to be in the paper at least three days in advance, given some time delays to get it in the paper, the very next morning that goes off, you'll be queued up for the 11th and we'll be there that night for.
And then that, that puts us in nice timing because if we have some advanced work done on the rating, we wouldn't have the rating, we wouldn't be filing anything for the rating until then, but you could get down to New York and back hopefully quickly. What we don't want to do is do all this planning and then get to a very narrow window of time and it's like a pick 'em all, the market's, yeah, it's, ah, shucks, gee whiz. The wider amount of time we have to decide when the stars are aligning is after.
That's right.
Anybody else? Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
I know this always takes a lot of time, I'm sorry to tie your meetings on.
It's an important decision.
Worth the time.
Very fortunate.
Thank you.
Thank you again for the opportunity.
That's all I have, it was not winning tonight, that's the greatest.
Hey, we have the, we're now turning it back to me and the recognition of visitors. We have nobody sign up for this evening, so we'll move into a motion and may have a motion to approve the treasurer's reports and high school extracurricular fund reports.
Motion.
Second by Nef.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. May have a motion to approve the list of bills for the month of October.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Phil, second by Nef.
Question being called for. This will be roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. Move into old business.
Not a senior, Mr. President.
I'd have some old business. I'd ask an old business, I just want a clarification, Mr. President, or maybe Brett can answer this, the checks to go out to the libraries, are mailed when?
They're usually mailed in May.
Okay, so we have time to, to discuss the allocation, thank you.
Yep.
Since we're under old business, we have a prime opportunity at, this is Issing's House, Senator Ward has arranged an opportunity for, for me, when I'm at the conference, to talk with the Senate Majority Leader, and offer a five-minute plea about the status of the bill now, which is called, which is 618, which is the cyber, 618, Cyber Charter Schools. It's the close, it's already passed the House, it's in the Senate right now, we already know that our, the Senator Ward's on board with it, it's a valuable opportunity to see if we can actually get it, to pass it, and we'll have our first relief we've had related to the cyber charter schools ever, so wish me luck, and I got five minutes, so we'll see what happens.
It's a two-year law, two-year formula, and what it takes, it does, it takes out of the funding for cyber schools, food service, transportation, and eliminates the double dipping that they are currently doing into the pension money. And it's only, and the way it was explained to us is, it's only two years, but during that two years, they have time to seriously look at the funding formula, and hopefully come up with a final formula that they can go forward for in the long run.
Mrs. Issing and I were there, Representative Dunlap was.
Dunlap.
Sorry. George will definitely appreciate that, but it was very instrumental in clarifying for us in great detail. He's been very supportive of this whole concept, and we really thank him an awful lot. I thank Mrs. Issing for kind of orchestrating a lot of this, she needed to help make this very possible.
Thanks, no problem. One more thing that he said, passing on, I asked him about prevailing rate, you know, that would give us a lot of relief, but with 20, 25% he think it, and the funding of our project, and he said, "There are a lot of serious conversations going on right now, and at least an initial vote is expected within the next couple of weeks, to see if they got any momentum to go forward, to try to eliminate that obligation for us." So, let's hope.
It's going to be exciting, get Hershey.
Yeah. You're going tomorrow.
Tomorrow, I believe, tomorrow morning. Good luck.
You have a free.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Executive session, it seems like we're always apologizing, we apologize for being here early, and you had to wait on us again anyway, but we are going to have a brief executive session for personal reasons right after the meeting. New business, athletics and extracurricular, Mrs. Issing?
Okay, the first thing I want to do is congratulate, congratulate the ladies golf team who won the Whipple title for the second year in a row. They did a fantastic job. Okay, moving on to business here. First motion is to move to employ the following personnel, Brenda Cristally, art club sponsor at the high school, Kaye Daz, newspaper sponsor at Penn Middle School, effective immediately, Brandon Graney, junior high wrestling assistant coach, effective immediately, Robert McFarland, department chairperson for social studies, co-sponsor grade six through eight, to share position and pay with Chad Wazo, effective immediately, and Chad Wazo, department chairperson for social studies, co-sponsor grade six through eight, to share position and pay with Robert McFarland, effective immediately.
Second.
Second by Nick.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
On my last motion, move to approve the following volunteer coach, new employment is contingent upon the receipt of all necessary documentation and the acceptance of Act 34, 151, and 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within 30 days. Dennis Little, JV varsity softball volunteer coach, effective immediately.
Second.
Second by Phil.
Question being called for, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Budget and finance, Mr. Chassek?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to authorize the administration to make payments amounted to $13,020 for credits earned by professional employees in accordance with a negotiated agreement. The list as presented to the board, showing the individual payments due will be filed with official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Second by Nick.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve a project proposal for my due integrations for Equal Logic PS 6100 SAN at a cost of $39,600, and I believe that was the previous.
Jason had a presentation a couple months back, yes.
Second.
Second by Nick.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That is all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chassek. Buildings, grounds, and safety, Mr. Leonard?
Yes, I do have one motion, and I'd like to move to employ the following personnel, new employment is contingent upon the receipt of all necessary documentation and the acceptance of Act 34, 151, and 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within 30 days. Richard Senkow, as a part-time employee, five hours per day for maintenance garage at the 14, 60-hour rate effective October 15, 2013.
Second.
Second by Rich.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried, and Richard is actually in the audience, are you here, Richard? Would you be willing to stand up?
Don't pull the board.
Congratulations.
That is all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Employee relations, negotiations, transportation, Dr. Koschko?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the SEI Local 32BJ contract effectively July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2016. Copy this contract, we file with official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Second by Rich.
Question, I do, it's just a quick comment to thank the negotiating team on a job well done.
Thank you. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. I'll be honest, President. Thank you, Dr. Koschko, food service, Mr. Nemec?
I have nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Nemec. Personnel and curriculum, Mr. Petrusi?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the list of additional substitute teachers and support personnel for the month of October 2013.
Second.
Second by Phil.
Question being called for, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to authorize administration to approve any new parent volunteers in accordance with past practices and policy. Volunteers will be used only where a teacher and/or principal approves, and all volunteers will have Act 34, 151, and 114 clearances on top.
Second.
Second by Dallas.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following personnel, new employment is contingent upon the receipt of all necessary documentation as set as of Act 34, 151, 114 waivers for the Pennsylvania within 30 days. Lynn Laucher, paraprofessional at Penn Trapp High School, at 9:25 an hour, effective October 15 this year. And Shanna Mongesewski, paraprofessional at Penn Middle School, non-union, three hours a day at 9:25 an hour, effective October 15, 2013.
Second.
Second by Phil.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. By the way, Linda and Shanna, you're both here also.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard, again.
Excellent. Do we pass it, Jay?
Yes.
Move to approve the following leave requests, Megan Maserelli, business office, FMLLE League, November 1, 2013, to January 13, 2014. Noel Stotts, special education teacher, Level Green, FMLLE League, December 9, 2013, to February 28, 2014. Allison Sanoski, FCS teacher at Trappin' FML Schools, FMLLE, from October 21, 2013, to March 2, 2014.
Second.
Second by Phil.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following student teachers, Simon Slippin Rock, cooperating professional, Melissa Valaris, Level Green, student teacher, Lindsay Murphy, area's grade kindergarten in Danes, September 3 this year to December 20, 30th of this year. Duke King, cooperating professional, Irina Smith, Sunrise, student teacher, Michelle Manella, area grade one, dates January 6, 2014, to April 25, 2014.
Second.
Second by Dallas.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
So am I, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi.